Second.
Aye.
Aye. Need to have approval of the minutes for September. That would include the budget here in minutes too.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Aye.
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 Quick and normal, right? We don't feel separate?
No.
Correct.
There, I moved it.
Make sure that page that's on. Yeah. Hey, I was just finding the question. Your unpaid bills is in the middle of your packet somewhere.
Well, let pay bills, there's a correction on there.
Okay.
On the food giveaway, the total was one hundred four seventeen, but the check was actually just one hundred.
And then the bank statement, you can see the check, maybe it's one hundred dollars.
Okay, um, I want to ask a question because I really don't understand. Deb tried to tell me on the two hundred and fifty, and some of those checks, when I look back, one of them was for two eighty-five, and you told me it was for insurance reimbursement?
Two fifty is health insurance reimbursement.
But if you go back on them, some of them was like, one was two seventy-eight?
It's would have been the mileage was added on there? Do you know what month it was?
Well, yeah, I wrote down the month. It was like the third and the twenty-eighth, it was two seventy-eight. Why wouldn't it have done, all of them been two fifty? And on the eighth and the first, it was two eighty-five?
The eighth and the first?
That doesn't make sense to me. Yeah.
The eighth and the first of what?
Twenty-two. I wasn't on the council in twenty-one.
The eighth month?
Eighth month and the first day of twenty-two.
Okay, that was probably, I can go back and look, but it was probably.
I mean, I have, yeah, because these are extra checks that you and Linda Brown signed. And some of them were for forty-seven thirty-nine, which you said was for gas extra. But you said this was for insurance yesterday, when I asked you.
Two fifty is for insurance.
Why wouldn't your insurance be taken out of your check like theirs are? And their insurance added into their check?
It's reimbursement.
I don't understand.
My husband pays for my insurance, so the city reimburses me. That's what was decided from the council years ago.
For a limit up to two hundred and fifty dollars.
But if the, some of the checks are for like two seventy-eight?
Did you look on that memo one? Did it say?
It doesn't say.
Okay, I'll look and I can bring it back up next week.
Okay. I mean, I just wondered because this is my.
Well, generally, either my insurance added to her insurance check rather than my three different checks.
Okay, oh, I just wondered.
If you're looking at the unpaid bill, the fire protection, we do our fire extinguishers. Isn't that right, Sinta?
Sintas, and I'm giving a quote from Pratt class because they do the same thing. So they're going to give us a quote to see if they can do it cheaper.
So we need an approval of the bills.
Making motion, we approve the bills?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Chair, do you report?
Um, so on the dressers report, there's only thirty-three percent left in this year's budget. On checking account, fully at the end of September was one hundred seventy-two thousand eight hundred forty-four and seven cents. The savings account at the end of September was forty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty. And then there was a full amount of interest paid of nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Um, the full unpaid bills as of September thirtieth, two thousand seven hundred twenty-eight and forty-seven cents, which that's in your quarters. Um, the payroll summary total gross paid out in September was nine thousand two hundred and nine and ninety-five cents. Um, since the pool is closed, that will obviously go down in the next month. Um, expenses for September were twenty-two thousand three hundred ninety-nine and ninety-four cents. And then the income was forty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-six and thirty-six cents. And then in the folders, in your folders, there's a letter from me for the, my resignation for this part position. Because I will be able to do that after the meeting.
So would you like for me to put an add in, or are we just going to close it?
Like try and, we're gonna try and, we're gonna need it back there.
Yeah.
Need motion, need?
Making motion, we put an add in the paper for September.
Second.
Um, write it a week before the next meeting.
In just the record?
Um, don't we do come in too?
She could probably almost do Facebook too, didn't she?
Huh?
She could probably do Facebook too.
They usually do, yeah.
We put it on the Sinta page.
Did Jeff second that?
Yes.
Um, IMR, we had sent him to terminate the contract letter. So he called me and he was very polite, but he asked if I could send him the report that we received from the state. I just wanted to make sure it was okay with you guys that I did that. He said he wants to use it as a learning tool for future. Is that okay to send that report?
I think that's good to hear.
Nothing that would, I suppose on that was there?
I don't, I haven't saved it before. I don't know what we did.
I think you said, you want to send it to him first and make sure that everything?
I think yeah, make sure there ain't a reason why you said we should.
That makes sense to me.
Um.
And if he's fine, I think it'd be all right.
Okay. I sent all of the mowing fees into Reno County, and it was for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. So four thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents has been added to property taxes for people that have had their property mowed and haven't paid. Um, I received a bill from QuickBooks payroll. It's due at the end of October, six hundred and fifty dollars, so I don't need to Google to pay that. It's always been an automatic thing. They automatically pay it, but I can.
It's covered if you want that.
That's the QuickBooks, that's your payroll.
Yeah, I'm making motion to pay that bill for QuickBooks.
Second.
How much did you say it was?
Six fifty. Six fifty.
For six fifty? Five?
Five, okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Um, dog catcher. A week.
Good luck.
Exactly. Um, you know, we get a lot of complaints, and the only thing that us employees can do, you know, is have this a lot of complaints and then send it to Danny. But some people expect us to go out and actually catch the dog or do something, which we don't do. But is, are there any other solutions besides filling out a complaint form?
The one we had before has no interest in it. I checked with the main society Pratt to see if they knew anybody that seemed.
None of them we had before, that's cash away.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Because when the sheriff did come out and pick up one, they can actually come back and charge a term if they want to. We're having to come out and do that.
I don't know. We probably put an add in the papers if he's the only one that's ever called the page.
Since catcher.
You guys want to try that?
Let me check the text.
We can try it. Unless ever Urban wants to use a dog catcher. Making motion, need?
I'm making motion to put an add on Pratt and Cunningham paper for a dog catcher.
Pratt and Cunningham or the term?
Look it up, the, the term, the record.
Second.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Aye.
Control all, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, how long do you want it, right?
At least till the next meeting.
Um, the training in November, um, I'm not going to be going. So I'm trying to save almost a thousand dollars. And then audit, we don't have to have one, you know, because we found out from.
Tom.
Tom Finger, that we don't have to have one. I just want to verify that you guys don't want to have one.
I can't see doing it over here.
No, we only got six thousand, like in our guide, so it makes sense to do an audit just on that.
And they charge what, like three thousand for that?
Yeah. If it's a, had to do on the first one, but. Part of the requirement. No. Well, we're going to have audience comments. Bill.
I have one.
Well, wait a minute, Mr. Wild, we have, yeah, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to say it, only that I kind of think audience comments ought to be later in the meeting, so we have more to comment about.
Well, we have a reason for having it this time, as you'll soon find out.
Oh, okay.
All right. I know the one that wants to get rid of the animal ordinance is not here. Um, I have great concerns about it. If you get rid of the restrictions on cows, we're going to have fifty cows in everybody's backyard. I, seventy-four people elected you guys to represent us. I've got signatures of thirty people, one of these paid to be here by us citizens. So I have thirty people that do not want to get rid of the animal ordinance that we have now. Because we can't control dogs, hardly can control a cow running around, or pigs. They're going to get out. Um, that's the main concern. I mean, we don't care about chickens, who cares about chickens and bunnies? I'm worried about the goats. I talked to one, he's going to get fifty donkeys in his yard if this goes through. I'll have them moved down by you guys. Um, their concern is the dogs also. They're like, why aren't you worried about the dogs? I'm like, well, you have to go through a process, but. I did get thirty citizens, they're all homeowners, pay taxes, you represent them, that do not want the ordinance removed.
Thanks for doing that. You guys want it removed or not?
I think we should wait for the other two to be here before we vote on it.
Yeah.
I think they should have a say too.
We have a form. You can make a motion, you can win a motion.
I made a motion, if we keep the ordinance the way it is.
How did you change the motion on the paperwork? Can we look at that?
So, yeah, I already know we're doing audience comments. So first of all, on the, on the statute on petitions, um, it's a little different because that, that statute is set up where it means someone brings in a new ordinance to pass. It's forty percent of the electors, thirty signatures hits that, um, get there, and then it's either brought to the governing body to pass, or sent to a vote of the electors. So I think if the petition is to keep this ordinance, if the council voted to repeal it, then I think, based on the petition, if it's filed with the clerk, then it would get to a vote, um, for the electors in town to repeal it or to keep it. What I drew up all last evening was an ordinance repealing, um, section two eleven. There was talk about simplifying that, trying to clean it up. So I looked at what we had and, you know, check for two of the ordinances. Two dash one oh two covered cruelty to animals. Part of that is you've got to provide adequate food, water, space for the animals. Two dash one oh four covers noisy animals. Two dash one oh six covers vicious animals. Two dash one oh seven covers animals of large. Two dash one oh eight covers nuisance animals. And two dash one ten says if you're going to keep horse, cattle, swine, sheep, alpaca, goat, mules, donkey, llama, or other undomesticated animals, you've got to get a permit from the city to keep that in your yard. So my suggestion, as far as cleaning up the ordinance, rather than having two eleven, it says you can have twelve female chickens, whatever. Those other ordinances can potentially cover everything, and you don't need to have both. But that, that was just going to be my recommendation, whether saying, okay, we'll have those in addition to this one. But I think it's a different spot now. If there's a petition to keep this ordinance as is, then I think it's either a vote to repeal it, and then the council votes to repeal it, it would go to a general election to the vote. Or if the council votes not to repeal it, then that would be considering passing the ordinance that the petition's in favor of, and just stay as it is. And that felt like a loss. Let me know what questions you have.
And they have the cows and all that, you have to have at least one acre per animal, right? And most of these places don't have that.
That, that's under the current ordinance, yeah. So if two dash one eleven were removed, that one acre required one can be removed. There's still two dash one ten that says you have to get a permit from the city to keep those animals. I don't know what our policy is as far as granting or denying those permits. Or if anyone's even ever asked for.
I don't think the people that signed the petition have a problem with the chickens or the bunnies. They just don't want these other animals. And I thought there was a state statute that covered bees.
Does your bee move?
I, I don't know, I think.
I just know that the bee must have to have an acre per animal.
There is a state statute on that.
I do believe there is.
And if you have horses, you have to have, um, coverage for them. The sag was whatever.
Yeah. I'd, I'd like to see the council just amend part one and two and leave the rest there. Because that was Gabe's idea, was that like, so people could have more eggs and have rabbits. I mean, I'd just like to see those two amended and leave the other thing as is.
Well, what, what's the petition for exactly?
Just to keep the one acre. I put subsection C through H to keep that. They don't care about chickens or bunnies. There's, chickens don't get out and come in your yard and scare your kid like a grown hog does. Have them experience urges.
Okay, so it would be an ordinance commending to allow to get rid of, um, A and B.
Right, and that's what I asked.
Which would be chickens and rabbits.
And I talked to thirty-five people, and thirty people signed it. Two were going to get the donkeys. One wanted to hear more about it, and two just said no.
But she ain't been off that much.
Yeah, I did it after work and everybody's eating, so.
If you go general election, that, there's not going to be another election until next year.
Have, it just kind of on the.
You'd have to pay for it.
On the details of it, have you filed that petition, local or municipal?
Not yet.
So, but before that would get to the council for a vote, that needs to be done. It would need to be.
And, and I mainly come in as a concerned citizen. I pay taxes, I own my house, all these people here pay taxes. They wanted their voices heard before it had to go to anything more.
So.
I have a question. I know the next argument was going to be, well, I'm grandfathered in, so you might want to look into that also.
It's also explained.
Well, tell Mercedes that because he's got a bull over here by the pool. Behind Lucky's? He lives in Preston, but his mother, his grandmother, whatever, lives in Turon, and they have cattle there all the time. And he, you know who I'm talking about, Deb?
Oh, Ozenball.
Ozenball.
Yeah, and they keep saying, well, I'm grandfathered in, so you guys, you know, you might want.
And Urban and Ozenball's were grandfathered in when this ordinance was made, because they already had horses and cattle there.
Right.
But he doesn't keep, I'm, my question is, he don't keep them there all the time. It's whenever it's convenient. And I mean, Ireland keeps horses there all the time. He just puts them there whenever he wants. Because you, you know, they're going to see, well, he don't have cattle there, and then a month later, he's got cattle, they're going to say, well, he can do it, why can't I? Just trying to stop if it's working ugly.
Come here, like stop it, I can redo it, you know.
Okay, so.
I pause it, I can redo it.
Think we're, we're not just signing, um, we don't have that, that petition ordinance filed with the clerk, so that's not here to vote on. I've got one drawn up, repealing that ordinance, you can vote on it, or you can tell me. Drawn up, we'll move it to subsections, I'll bring it back. Next month, boy, do something leave it as is, and I won't do anything.
Obviously, just draw it up and remove the others for the small animals, and leave all the rest as it is.
Okay, okay.
That would help.
Because I think that would.
That would help. I mean, you know.
That makes all of you guys happy, right?
Yeah, well, the giant wouldn't have.
Well, there goes my cows.
Well, if, if.
And then they have to admit it, or put it in the election.
Yeah.
The general election would cost money, because the city would have to pay for that.
So if we want to change it to have the chickens and stuff at hospital or election?
No.
No.
No, no. If you want to, if you want to just take this off as a deal, it would probably, the petition probably be sent in then.
So, well.
If they leave it as is.
The difference is if I draw up the ordinance and I'm going to take it out A and B, and I'm the one that brings it, because you guys asked for it, and then you guys look at it and don't pass it, that's the end of it. If Chris files a petition with the council ordinance, bring it to you to pass, and you guys don't pass it, then it would go to the general election. So if, if she files hers, and she brings it, there's a follow-up step if you don't pass it. If I bring it and you don't pass it, that's just the end of it.
I think the council members all need to be here.
But I, I'll, I'll draw it up, I'll bring it in.
Okay. Right, so all the council members had two days to be here, so, and I was here yesterday waiting for them all.
Yeah.
But Christine, that'll cover.
Yes, and, and when I talk to everybody, and these are homeowners, they're, they don't care about the rabbits and the bunnies. The bunny's not going to hurt nobody.
Right.
Or the, and the chickens, they don't bother anybody. But, you know, the roosters are still on this bottom part, and the billy goats and the donkeys that they're wanting to bring in.
Okay.
I'd say that's.
Yeah.
They price them lightly.
Next month.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, um, Danny wants an executive session, want that before you talk about court proceedings?
Um, yeah, we can do that real quick.
However you want to.
In just a, what's that?
Do you remember when you?
Yeah, yeah, I just, you know, like a ten-minute executive session, um, for legal matters.
Leave this up. James, leave this going.
Yeah, just.
Uh, yes, well, they both have. Yeah, no matter which of they all.
That makes sense.
I can, I can just back to another one. Chad, you think you should? Rocky Kenny?
I thought there was a fist, fist.
Do you want to, Kenny? Come on.
Okay, let's go outside, we'll check the first thing.
No, the executive session, ten minutes. Some smoke, I think you got it.
I can't hear anything.
Okay, so when you run for mayor, you make sure you put your hearing.
Actually, just, I'm not going to show up anymore.
Actually, just, I'm not gonna show up anymore.
So, you're dead.
Tennessee walking horses, I don't know.
No. If I can ride, yes.
Nah, you don't wanna ride them. Used to, used to have a worker.
They're Hebrews.
Bad. Psychotic.
My dad's got Arabs.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. They're on crack. They'd rather dump you than ri- let you ride them.
What I found was, people who have those show horses, they keep them in stable. Most of the time, they never let them out. I won't say all of them, but a lot of them do. And they end up being psychotic, I mean, just weird and crazy.
He want me to do.
Not that that's why.
Well, he want me to do a massage and I said, no. I won't go anywhere while without a horse.
Yeah. Didn't I, Robert, didn't I bring up a, a comment about, uh.
Mother.
I think you all.
What?
Mary.
When you were mayor, about the adroom, why couldn't we just put goats out there? Maybe it's because they would fall in the water or something? I don't know. Those things that. They'd get nice and fat. Probably. Yuri goat feed or something. Yeah. I don't know, I was just thinking of that kinda thing, I thought. Yeah, why couldn't we just do that? Surely they don't have a swim. Uh, yeah. It'd be. There's probably a humane society thing about it or something. But.
To answer your question, the reason you can't have sheep or goats out there.
Yeah.
Is because of the grass itself. If they chew it off too short, you're gonna wash the dikes away.
Oh, man.
Then, then we don't have no dikes around with you. That's the reason they quit allowing animals to graze or whatever.
That makes sense. It would be nice.
The state, the state.
Uh, that makes sense. Too bad. Yeah. Get something that'll eat the grass.
Follow me and Dax, order will actually taken.
Um, following up on a couple others items from last month. Even you asked about a sales tax and how that goes. That's something the council wants to do. Um, you draw it up and it would have to be put on the ballot if you run on the city. We don't have time to be gone for general election. Except for some of the.
I still have weight on the next one.
So, it would put on with that.
The table took voices to that.
Yeah. Um, and then we talked, previously talked about raising the court piece because of the court. I don't think we ever decided to do that. Um, but that came up in conversation again. I don't know if that's anything the council's interested in.
Yeah, cause I thought we did hear on that, Gabe said we did.
Right now it's ninety?
Ninety. And I think we talked about it at one point, talked about sharing the cost of court with another town. And I think that just kinda.
Yeah, I think they went ahead and did, they were on that, they said, yeah.
Cause that one said about changing it to ninety up to one fifty. Remember that? No?
I didn't have another amount anyway that I could find, just that we talked about it.
Andrew.
This, I think, this one came on.
Oh, this last year? Because right now, the judge just asked the bill for two hundred and fifty dollars per hundred pound.
He's raised his.
Last year too. And I don't know if that's every time or.
You probably will, don't you?
I, that's included. That's included, whatever, yeah.
Just checking.
Yeah. So, if you guys want me to raise that, that would be, you just mentioned the ordinance, set those fees and we can raise.
I think we should, cause it's costing us a lot of money as it is. Now, if, if we're charging ninety, he's charging two fifty.
If we raise it to one twenty-five and just make sure I've got two cases to file with, to file in here. So at least we can, his fee for the cost.
Sounds good. Do I consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kenny, was there anything you need to bring up, cause Jen was here last night?
Uh, she's not feeling well, no, I was kinda wanting to see what the outcome of the animal.
Oh, okay, okay.
Activity was.
I thought maybe she's gonna ask for a donation for the Halloween.
I, I can ask for donations if you'd like. In time for records, I would mention that.
You're down at the.
The library people, uh.
I guess we have it down later in the.
Yeah, library people have a little party out there.
Okay. Yeah, it's unfinished business, so it's later. Okay. I don't. I don't know if you need to stay for this one or not. It's for his son that can sign his certification that everything.
I was very sure his son would be able to go back and roll.
I mean, his son didn't have a lot to sign this. If you guys don't have anything else for Danny, you'd probably. Stay. Well, he was here last night though.
He thought we all were.
And lovely's not gonna be here tonight though. I think he's gone again last night.
Yeah. Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you. Do what?
The hearing, everyone paid up today, so I think I'll hopefully extra day.
Good game last night.
If you'd like to talk after unfinished business, Mr. Lovely, we could do that.
No, I'm just bringing it up where it was on the agenda.
Okay. Um, Everett.
I'm not here as a city employee, I'm here as a resident. I own four lots on Nebraska Street. Since there's no zoning in, uh, the city of Turon where anything has to be exactly, I've got four lots that I wanna put shed type motel where you could rent the shed rooms as a day or weekly or monthly. I wanna put four of the shed houses, small houses on those four lots. But I need to know from the council if it's alright on those four lots and about water and sewer. Because I don't wanna pay a water meter for every one of them. If, it's gonna be like a motel or. To where I would have the water for every house, sewer for every one of them. And there'd be four of them on them lots. Smallest one would probably be fourteen by twenty and the biggest one fourteen by thirty-two. Where we can have a place if somebody comes to town to visit relatives, they have a place to stay. Or I know as me getting older and retiring, if I retired, I couldn't afford to pay the rent on some of the other houses on a big house by myself. So the little house would let somebody move in there. But I wanna be able to use one meter and, and do a sewer. And I would pay for the sewer to run down the middle between the four of them. Where we can hook each one of them up. I want one sewer tap. Each one of the houses would have four inch sewer line. They would have their own electric, everything would be and own water. Every one of them would have their own water. I'd have a pit out front to where we could shut it off to work on one. So everybody else in the complex would have water. And I could drain them up in the wintertime if they're not being, being used.
That's pretty much what the motels have. They would each have one, yeah.
So I'm asking the council to.
Some of them.
But what does that go back with the other day with every separate structure I'd have it on?
You guys left it there.
We, we have, it would be, every structure would have its own water and its own sewer. Every, cause I'm gonna pay for the pipe to go down the middle of that property to hook into the sewer mix.
Everett, how many units are you talking per property? How, how many units?
Well, four, four units, there's enough on them four lots. Two on one side and two on the other with a drive down the middle. That way harvest, I mean, hunters could come in and rent a cabin for the night, the weekend, weekly, or somebody could move in it and be monks.
So he is having a monk separate and the build could just be on one, one meter.
So I'm asking to move, put four sheds in there. And if you're not, if you don't want that, the other one would be to put RV park. And I wanna do, where they could pull their campers in and park them. But it's not zoned, so I've gotta come to you to ask, what, what am I legally gonna have to do? So when I tell them the investor that's gonna help me, this is what it's gonna cost to do all this. If I don't have your permission, I can't, I can't move on on the lots.
I like the, the four sheds. It might bring in more hunters and stuff like you say. Spend more money here in town at the cafe and.
Which, which lot is this?
So, the lots between four eleven, uh, Charles and I, now my brother and I own that house. Four eleven Charles and three oh five East Nebraska. So it would be three oh seven East Nebraska. There's four lots between the garage and where the other garage sits. Used to sit where the trees are on the concrete.
It'll be up in lots for a year.
The only reason I'm, the, the reason, I own those, but it's also close to the park, close to the swimming pool in the summertime.
So, how big are these sheds gonna be? I mean, two rooms?
Like a little house.
Yeah, just two rooms and a loft, bed up above mainly.
Fourteen by thirty-two.
Kitchenette, fourteen by, huh?
Yeah, you said fourteen by twenty and fourteen by thirty-two.
Fourteen by twenty would be probably be the smallest and the biggest one would be fourteen by thirty-two. So, there'd be a little more room for more than just a couple to stay in it. And that's not something that's gonna totally happen overnight, but I've gotta, I've gotta ask your permission first.
Plus, we would give more taxes on it too, right? We, there's a building on it there. Thank you.
What's the idea that you're trying to improve the town, which nobody else seems to be doing?
I see no problem with that, without you guys.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do we just need a consensus on that?
Don't think it'd be that big of a deal, Chris. Like you said, a motel doesn't have separate waters.
I mean, it's all on the same land. I don't have a problem with it.
It would end up being a business, so.
Because it's all on the same land. If it wasn't on the same land, I, you know, it would be different.
It'd end up being a business, so your dumpsters and stuff would be a business dumpster and stuff, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there would be a business dumpster behind from the quicker trash can. But it would still be charged through the city the same way as what my dumpster that I got sent in my other house on Kansas. I have that dumpster there.
I have a concern on that house. That you haven't enclosed that, you've got.
A ditch open, yes.
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 And I see kids playing in that.
Okay.
That needs to be closed up.
Okay.
I mean, I think kids could get hurt.
Yeah.
I just haven't never caught you to tie that.
Well, when I have people go all over to the archway and start going in that, I just say, you guys shouldn't be on that property.
Well, you know, I'm at work, but I can see them, 'cause I can see them down there. And I've seen those kids playing down in there and I was gonna mention that to you even today when I seen you, but I, I'm busy. So, I mean, you know, I'm not getting on to nobody, I'm just bringing it to your attention.
So, is it a consensus that I can put shed houses?
I think so, yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
I guess you could make.
Next one, since I brought it, that my brother and I own four Charles. The next one is we wanna put a culvert in it. We will buy the culvert to put in a next, another driveway by that house. If the city will help with the culvert in.
Is that the, uh, one that would be on which street is that?
We sharing Nicky's old house.
Yeah, we have problems with that culvert right there at that corner all the time. I mean, it, it plugs up and we've had flooding across that area. I mean, just since forever.
Charles and Nebraska, right? At Charles and Nebraska.
So, maybe a next culvert would even help with that problem.
Yeah, I wanna put one downstream.
I wanna put it downstream from that one, but I can clean that out.
Yeah.
When we put the one in downstream from it, so it'll drain.
I seen a video the other day where they took a tire and pulled it through the culvert to clean out all that stuff.
What does that cost to do that though? What would it cost the city to do that?
To clean the ditch or maybe just a matter of hauling the dirt from where we got it behind the wellhouse over there, behind the water tower over there to help fill in around the culvert and have it packed in where we could put rock across it.
So, it would just be your time?
It'd just be our time. It wouldn't be, the city's time was all it would be to install that culvert.
We did that for Gabe, didn't we?
We did, yes, yes, we did.
We did that for Gabe out here.
Yeah.
Like I said, we bought a twenty-four inch culvert, so it's big enough to carry the water.
And thank you, did we do it for somebody else or what, so too?
Yeah, everybody else you did. But James' corner is real bad, yeah. It backs up into Dennis' yard.
It backs up in my yard.
Yeah.
Is this gonna set precedence?
Hmm?
Will this set precedence by approving that?
By approving the culvert?
No, approving your, your whole plan there. I'm just asking if the whole town's gonna turn into a RV park and.
Well.
It already is.
If, if.
I mean, it's okay with me. I, I like your idea.
I like the RV park better.
I'm just asking. That's my question.
Yeah, you'll still have to come to the council and ask permission, so.
It's kinda hard to get turned down though if it's been approved once. I'm just saying, just saying.
It's been done before.
Did they do it on it?
Did they buy the culvert?
Mm-hmm. So, that's how, yeah, that's what we were thinking for.
Did Gabe buy his culvert or did we?
No, we had, we had.
The culvert.
Yeah.
We had it, okay. So, okay, the culvert?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, while you're doing it. Okay.
Or then?
Yeah, we really don't have too much to report. Got them two sewer lines lined in the alley line, Bradshaw. Oh, just next block over here is never done. Working on the water line now on Burns, extending that water line. Only thing I got, probably gonna bring a dumpster back here, probably, we can have it for probably a month. If you got a problem with it or not.
Oh, I'm ready for it to come back. I think a lot of people are.
Yeah, a lot of people have it, but I don't wanna be all winter out here for months at the moment.
Well, usually we do it by around.
Well, usually, like last year, we just had it for a month.
Yeah, we usually do it around time change, not until November.
It's spring down, we have it longer, but usually this time of year, we just bring it back about a month.
It's like November, December?
Is there a lot of stuff that needs to be cleaned up around these towns?
It's up to you guys.
The longer it's here, the longer people go through and do shit back out of it.
If we leave it too long, we're actually a lot of town hall stuff in.
Do what?
If we leave it too long, means everybody's coming out of town, all the stuff in, we're both for it away too.
They do it since it's here.
That's reading, we don't like to move it around here long.
Okay.
It's up to you, however long you want. It is up to me, I just have to drive the green next back out.
Well, it's, so, you say everybody, the guy who gets in it takes everything out anyway.
So, you want it for one month?
I vote one month.
Okay. I imagine that he gets his dumpster for one month through December.
I wanna wait, didn't, it's end of the month then, or you only order it this week or?
Yeah, we would do it when the clock changes.
That won't be till November.
First week, I think, in November.
Yeah, wait a second, if we got it here.
Before Halloween.
Before Halloween, have it a couple weeks after Halloween.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's fine.
But it's not cold, it's warm now. Now, you guys are waiting until it gets snowy out. People don't wanna clean your house up, but it's snowing out.
I won't.
I would do it when it's nice and warm out.
And that's what you just said.
Well, that's what.
If you do it now.
That's what I wanna say.
Until they say do it now.
We just say, call it, have it now, rather try to get here this weekend, keep it for bottom of month and here it is.
Yeah, that's fine. I misunderstood, sorry. I agree.
That's pretty much all I got.
Yeah, we need a second on that. I second it, okay.
Wait a minute. I have a little plan going on.
Okay, we're not done with this yet. So, I, for all three of you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know Debbie and Lena talked to you too about wintertime. If you have some downtime, I know. I wish I was bringing.
Start laughing now, okay.
But we can use some benches at the parks and we can make them for free out of pellet wood and the, any paint. So, it's something to think about doing.
First one, I get to waste the time myself. Got all the picnic tables up here now.
Think about it.
Yeah, we'll try it, but.
Don't you still have that metal?
I thought you were laughing.
One that goes along the tree too, out there in the pit. I think she blew both of them.
It's white.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm finished.
Does that tell us anything about this? That's the removal of something.
The what?
The Kenneth's water thing?
Something about the school, Chris?
I don't think I have, what, what you put in there?
I don't know.
That's that report they told us about last month, isn't it? Did they have Charlie come down and just test this slide?
Probably.
I guess I got the report somewhere. I don't have it in this paperwork. Is that the report that Charlie gave us about what he found at the lagoon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, well, that was.
That was just for information.
That was to let you know what he found.
Yeah, we see it talked about it last month, but then we got that, so it's pretty much. Think I should have given it to him.
Oh, well, yeah, we can always send it to him. Okay, we're gonna skip by the safety officer and the janitorly. So, we don't have a safety officer, or not really. Okay. So, we're gonna go right into unfinished business. You guys had the generators.
Yeah, Gabe and Charlie was open to getting one that we can move around instead of just one permanent one. So, we can't talk much about that with them.
Not true.
We'll just table it again.
Okay, so on the food giveaway, uh, was you guys gonna do it every month or just October? The way it come out in the minutes was you just did it for October or September.
You guys said every month, anybody needed a check that month, hold it for the next month. But he didn't make the motion that way.
It really needs to be if she needs it, we can okay it.
And if we wait each month for meeting time, there's seven months of the meeting just after the giveaway.
So, we need a motion made that you will just get the check when you need it?
Get the check and if I don't need it, I hold it for the next month.
So, we'll just make a new motion and we get that sort of thing as well.
Make a motion on the food giveaway that that will give her a check and if she doesn't need it, she'll hold the check till the next month.
And that would be in the amount of a hundred dollars.
In the amount of a hundred dollars.
I second it.
Aye.
I abstain.
I do appreciate that. Really helped this month.
Doesn't that require at least three ayes and since she can't vote?
Abstain actually, because I'm a aye.
Yes.
If, if say.
I guess I'll ask about that to somebody that knows.
Let me explain something to you, if.
I don't need you to explain something to me. I will ask somebody that actually takes care of council legal.
It was quite simple. If you're always to say yes and if, uh, she abstains, it would be a majority, so I would vote.
Right.
So, anyway, Robert, you can bring your problems back to the council again.
Okay. Well, I got a letter. I didn't get a letter because I was gone. And it was on my property, it's over. Uh, I don't know where it's at exactly, on Charles Street. The drainage ditch down there, it belongs to me. But the drainage ditch itself belongs to the city. And that's where we get a lot of weeds that grow up in that drainage ditch. And I don't feel that I should be responsible. It covers it all, we hold that properly. I mean, they're that. And it's just up to the field to sprout more, whatever they can do. I don't have any, anywhere mowing it, can't mow it. I don't have any right to be upset about anything on that. My problem is I was sent a certified letter, which my son got opened. I did finally get to see it in Deb's office. Which was none of his business. I don't know who let him have the damn thing. But we were gone. And I didn't find out about it until the day before. I was supposed to go to court or whatever. Otherwise, I could've got that rest of the lot mowed like it was supposed to be. And I was unaware that it was that close to time that it would be mowed. Uh, I didn't really see anything wrong with the grass. There's, there's nothing there, it's just a brass, except the weeds that come out of drainage ditch, which that seems possible.
We didn't send that one in, did we?
No.
So, I, what you would like to do is have the council absolve you of the hundred and fifty dollars for the mowing. Is that right?
Hundred and fifty, seven fifty to be exact. I think that's exactly, but I'm not, I'm not sure she has the things that are off. I didn't see the letter.
One hundred and fifty, seven fifty?
And.
Well, the letter does say that they have ten days to do it even if they don't pick up the letter, so.
But he has no right to pick up my mail. And I also found out that, uh, which is a matter for the post office, that, uh, they're supposed to have a person responsible for who's in the post office. They're supposed to, uh, know who they're giving the mail to. And they're supposed to have certification as to who they are and who they can pick up mail for. Which I will discuss with the post office, I guess, because I don't know whose responsibility that is.
Wow, you probably need to talk to the head lady over at Stafford.
Postmaster General.
Because that is a federal offense.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't bother me a bit to see them back into the table. But using just like, what's your type, did you say?
Yeah.
Postmaster General.
But weren't the girls mowing it?
Yeah. So, I don't. So, I don't know. Make up your mind, whatever you're gonna do. I have nothing more to say.
You're not gonna black this guy, so he can ask it is because it's not her fault. His son picked up the letter. He said he went ahead and they mowed it.
But I can, I am gonna say this. His grandkids started to mow it before they, they went over there and mowed it. That was my understanding from the girls. The city shouldn't mowed it. If they were mowing it, they'd stop to go get something to drink. Is that right, Robert?
That's what I was told. I wasn't here, so I don't really know.
I understand. So, two wrongs don't make a right.
So, is the waterway city's property or is that his property?
What?
Is the waterway city's property or is that his property?
We're not talking the waterway.
That's what he said.
The ditch.
Yeah, there's the waterway.
They know the law.
I know it all.
Waterway alongside the alley. It's on my property. It belongs to the city. The city is to take care of it and maintain it.
Not the ditch.
I don't know. We'd have to ask Urban.
What did you guys mow?
Mowed his lots down there.
The lots.
And it was pretty high because I think we also had a couple other properties we had to go that time and make or hide too.
But is that waterway the city's problem?
Probably.
Probably, I don't know.
Well, there's a, what is it? Drainage thing. It comes across like between rigs and.
If it wasn't there, you'd have water all over the town.
Works for the city. You should know you work for the city. If it's, if it's the city's or not.
I assume it's the city, but it's just a damn ditch. I mean, we're not, we didn't mow the ditch, we mowed his lots. That's what he's driving about.
Yeah, the lots.
That stuff coming. The weeds are growing in
Should be cleaned.
In the drainage ditch. The drainage ditch, which is supposed to be maintained by the city. And that's where the weeds are coming from there.
That's nothing to do with the tall grats on the lot.
Well, I mean, Sonia's property has a waterway. She keeps it mowed. The one that Ms. Harding has by the orchard, that's a waterway. It's on his property. He keeps it mowed. I'd have to ask Eva because I don't approve on that one. But I do know, you see that thing that got a dip there just on the, that side of rig this place? That goes down that. But when he says lot, he means the lot, not the ditch. And they had to do the one they were there on Second Main. To have mowed on Second Main. Same time. We can't rain, couldn't get in there now. That's why it's so high.
I'm gonna say we leave it alone.
Leave it alone and have it pay it?
Yeah.
In the census, we're not spending money.
Even though all three of you don't agree?
So, we sent, the thing will be sent in to Reno County?
Well, he, or he can pay it.
Or he can pay it, yeah. That was the decision.
What's that?
You could pay it or we'll send it in to Reno County.
Pay the whole, the home pitch is seven dollars.
Or you can have it put on your taxes. Poppy taxes.
I think the post office pay it.
Well, I wished he would go to them because it's a federal offense. I think she should have to pay it myself. Moving on, city block yard sale.
We were asked to put that back on in the fall. I don't know if anyone still has an interest in it.
St. John just gave one last week. It was pretty good.
Do you want me to send out something on Facebook? Did people say yes, but it's getting colder? Would it be possible to maybe have it in June? Everybody pretty much got, we set up tables. So, that way it fall in one place, people can just all go around. They did something like that in higher level.
I don't see a problem with it.
I'm worried a lot of people scratch the pool or all that stuff.
Well, the only thing with that is we started having those one things in there and then we started to happen to have a ID thing and we stopped doing it.
Well, that was a crap show.
I know, but you're selling stuff and.
Um, that's when you're selling retail. This is just a yard sale.
I'm saying it's hard telling. You got people that turn your hand for nothing, so. So, we're left with the library Halloween day donation.
Well, last month Gabe said if we have anything left over close to the date. We have like fifteen cans of soda left. Just a handful of candy, airheads, couple Skittles, new Starburst. And like four things of chips.
We usually give them some money. Something to the kids. I'm thinking about two hundred. So, I'm gonna make a motion with people I believe. Two hundred dollars towards the Halloween party.
Is that what we did in the past?
I'm not sure the exact amount, but I'm thinking it was two hundred. It wasn't less than that.
And they also have a trunk, trick, trick or trunk?
I thought they were coming to trunk a treat. Yeah, that's what the donation was going for. So, they can buy more candy and have a Halloween party, is that correct?
They're having party in there.
I'll second that.
Aye?
Aye.
Well, we don't have any new business. Anything? Anybody out there wants to ask now?
Yeah, I'd like to know how we're supposed to expect to have meetings. I mean, this is what, Tuesday? If half the council doesn't show up.
Things come up. We all have a life. We all have jobs and whatever.
And that's nice, but you made a commitment when you ran for council.
Your life don't just stop then.
Well, then don't run for council. I mean.
Run for council, you have absolutely nothing else in your life to do. For you, yeah.
If a person changes.
Excuse me? That's awfully rude of a freaking elected personnel to say.
There is an awful rude thing to say too.
Yeah, but I'm not in the like the personnel. There's a difference there.
I think what he's trying to say is when you run for council, you know it's seven o'clock, second Monday of every month.
Go ahead. The reason why these two are not here tonight is because of their wives and medical reasons.
That's right.
So, that comes first. Family comes first.
Well, this is the first I've heard of that. I mean, you could've been like, hey.
How did you know?
Actually, their personal life is none of your business.
That's awfully rude of a freaking mayor to say, but remember everything being.
I just said it again.
And everything being recorded.
You know, we are citizens and we do show up and wait for people to show up or not show up at all.
Maybe I had plans today, but instead I had to cancel them to come to the meeting because council members couldn't show up yesterday.
Why can't we make it where people are fined for being late? Get a little incentive. It's the money.
But I guess council members are more important than the citizens that elected them.
Remember, you're reporting. You said that, not us.
Four of the council members don't get paid to be here also.
No, we don't.
For free, it's given out to the city.
But you see, no matter what conflict does, someone always finds fault with it. No matter what we do.
You are coming to the meetings. We don't have any problem with you.
We have yet to have anybody come and thank us for anything that you've done. I've been on here seven years and nobody's ever come and thanked any of the council for anything.
I'm going for eleven years.
I'll put you on my Christmas card list.
Thank you. Every meeting, it's always something that we've done wrong or we don't do this, you know? We wasn't gonna do this, but.
I've done it for eleven years for no money. Plus be a safety officer, plus help with the very first water project we had. By using my own vehicle and my own time, so I wanna.
That closes the meeting off, yeah.
I just made my guilty body comment.
Yeah, I made mine. Cause we have a nice town here, which does have its problems, but nothing more than any other town. If the people who constantly complain are looking for a perfect town without problems, then they're living in the wrong place. It's always the same people along with their friends that complain, yet they're the ones that's always, they don't always obey the codes themselves. But yet they come here and complain about others. Some complain because I suggested a program to help people out loan the money, which would be paid back to help repair their properties or demolish them, whatever needed done. But they complained that we would use taxes and it's the same people who aren't paying their own taxes. So, we're losing money there too. We can't be on council not obey codes and expect to enforce others to obey them. Homes that need repair or demolished, junk vehicles, yard to be cleaned up. You tell me one place, one town that doesn't have these problems. If that's all that's wrong in this town, we oughta feel pretty damn lucky. We don't have anybody getting mugged, raped, attacked or nothing like that. The town's not perfect, but it's not that bad either. Those who go around looking for problems, looking to condemn our town, our city government, city employees. Do something more useful with your town, with your time. Maybe get together, help your neighbors instead of complaining about them. Some of the people are old, they can't keep up with their yard or take care of the dump that's in there. Give them a hand. Don't hope for anything in return. Just be willing to help. So, instead of fighting against each other, we need to work together and make these improvements. That's it.
Well, like. I go for another heart attack again Thursday and I'm here tonight. I was here last night. That's how much I care about this city. I don't like being told that I'm not worth what I think I'm worth anyway. I've done a lot for this city. Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
It's Mr. Mole. Thank you very much. And I never commented about you. You are here.
Whatever name you wanna use this week. I don't care.
Whatever name I wanna use this week? Hold on.
His legal name.
Whatever name you wanna use this week, James?
Legal name.
And whatever things do you wanna use?
Does it matter? What is it your business, my personal?
Exactly. The same thing we said about our council people.
Elected personnel by the council, or by the townsfolk to do job.
None of yours.
Did I say anything about this?
You're talking about Gabe and Tony and they've got family members. It's not well.
The fact is, okay, that's nice, but the fact is it says it the first time and it won't be the last.
Well, you call, you call the leaders and ask them if there's a problem that they don't show up and why they don't show up. You can't find them. You can't make them resign.
Say we could. I just asked about it. Because it's Tuesday, which is funny because this is also a special meeting because Monday's the council meeting. But there was nothing posted about it.
You have to not consider it a special meeting. It was rescheduled.
I am sorry that I was ten minutes late to the meeting.
Well, I understand.
I was at my house, ready to come to the meeting. I got a phone call for somebody wanting to buy my camper. I answered a few questions. I realized it was seven ten. I drove up here.
Yeah, and you showed up unfortunately right after the meeting was canceled, but well, I mean, I mean, I'm not, I'm just asking.
They don't have a life.
Then don't run for council. It's as simple as that. I guess these council, or these town folk don't have a life either.
I work eighty hours a week.
It is.